Morning, everybody. Today is Monday, September 29, 2025, and we are here for a town board work session. If we could all please rise for the pledge. Councilman Rothwell, would you mind leading us?
Yes, supervisor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have two matters under open session. The first matter is matters surrounding the tentative 2026 budget, and we will have Diopola come on up, our financial administrator, and Brittany Miller, who worked feverishly on this budget with us.
Good morning.
Good morning. We just presented the budget earlier in our special town board meeting, so now we have it, and we're going to get a more thorough look at it with the help of Jeanette and Brittany.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through a presentation on the 2026 budget, some of the highlights of the budget, all taxing districts, including highway, street lighting, sewer and water, all budgeted within the tax cap. The only exception, as you know, is the general fund. The 2026 general fund tentative budget exceeds the 2025 general fund adopted budget by 4.3 million. The townwide 2026 tentative budget is 4.63% over the cap. So the townwide budget reflects the general fund, the highway fund, and the street lighting fund, because all residents contribute to those three funds. The townwide tax increase for property valued at 735,000 is approximately 75 cents per day. Residential waste costs increases less than 30 cents a month or a penny a per day. So we have a five-year contract with Caluchia Carding, so it's the same amount for the five years, which was phenomenal. It was a great contractual deal with them. So the good thing is residential waste costs really won't go up by much. The only thing they go up by is a little bit of the housing and how we call them equivalent units, single-family, multifamily, that kind of thing. So there's different equivalent units, which is the same thing basically as assessed value for property taxes, it's just called equivalent units for residential waste. Total appropriations for the town operating fund in 2026 are 112.7 million, which is an increase of 3.2 million over last year. And then this is just a chart that breaks down the increases. You can see PD salaries is the highest increase, that's the 1.8 million, that's all contractual, so there's really nothing we can do about that. New York State retirement is second highest, that includes PD, retirement rate increases of 1.1 million, and non-PD of 200,000. Again, majority is PD, the retirement rates are highest for police officers rather than, you know, non-PD. But the retirement rates go up drastically every year, just kind of one of those things that's, you know, as the supervisor mentioned, out of our control. Much of this is out of our control, so, and we're already piercing the cap with probably the first item alone, just the PD salary increases, to be honest. So very difficult, impossible to stay within the cap, just because of contractual increases and New York State retirement, health insurance, and we're increasing debt for some renovations over at Justice Court for $286,000 next year. But that's pretty much the largest increases. On the next page, we're pretty much just segregating it out between PD versus non-PD. As we mentioned, the 1.8 million salaries and related payroll taxes for PD versus 545,000 for non-PD. Retirement rate increases, it's due to rate increases but also salary increases, those are contractual increases, so it's a combination of both, really, for 1.1 million for PD and then 246,000 for non-PD. Health insurance, NISHIP, only 98,000 increase for PD. So PD gets an insurance buyback, and that's why you see that's not as high as non-PD. Non-PD health insurance increases of 338,000, but PD actually has the option to take a buyback if their spouse has insurance already, and the buyback is a nice rate for police officers. So they tend to take that if they can, and it saves the town money, which is a great thing at the end of the day, so. And then debt service is the only other item on the non-PD. And then the last page is, it just basically shows a pie chart of the tax breakout by the taxing districts. So of course, as the supervisor mentioned, the school and library taxes has the largest percentage, which is approximately 54.63%. That could go up, because again, we're only estimating a 2% increase, but most will probably pierce the cap, is my guess. It's very difficult to stay within that 2%, so it's just an estimate on our part. The town is at 26.53%, and then all of the other districts, fire districts, highway, et cetera, they're all relatively small compared to the rest, so.
I just think it's very interesting how the town is always looked at as the responsible party for this entire budget, and I really want the public to be very well aware that more than, they double our taxes, the school and the library double what we are charging for taxes for people, right?
Yeah.
And I just want the public aware that you can vote, and you should vote, in May, because that's when school board elections and budgets are all being considered. So everyone thinks, oh, vote in November if you don't like a budget, or if you like a budget. Vote in May in the school districts to make sure that your voice is heard on where the school is spending the money, because it's not right to consider this the town's responsibility for all of the taxes. We're not responsible for this.
I think people think it's, we are responsible because it's our tax bill that's generated, so we combine it all onto our tax bill for the residents, and we're responsible to collect it, so, and then send them off to the separate districts. So we collect it for all the districts, we take our own in and code them to each fund the way they need to be, and then we also send their dollars out to the fire district, the schools and the libraries as we collect them. I think that's a Suffolk County thing, so, and Suffolk County makes everybody whole at the end of the day for those taxes that aren't paid. I think it's easier for Suffolk County if it comes from one place rather than all different districts, so I think that's why they do it.
I just want the public aware, I'm sorry, I just want the public aware that they're not accountable to us for their budget at all.
Absolutely not, yeah.
I did speak with the assessors, because ideally, I would really prefer for the residents to actually make out a check to the Riverhead Central School District for their taxes, so that they could see how much they're actually paying to the town as opposed to the school district. But you're right, they did tell me that that is a Suffolk County issue, but there are other counties in New York that do do that.
Yeah. Trust me, I would rather just deal with our taxes. It's more work on my department to collect for everybody and then disperse them for everybody, so, but it is what it is for now.
Also wanted to say, with the police department being a larger portion of our budget, how proud I am of the men and women in blue, but the chief has come here to multiple work sessions, crime is down, rates are down, but I think what's more important to point out is that we have more offices available on the roads, we're responding to more aided cases, we've had more CPR saves and life savings actions from our men and women on the police force, because they're becoming, with a higher number of officers being able to respond quicker, more effectively, we're giving them the tools that they need, and they are truly saving lives, and that's the most important thing on this budget, and we never put a dollar on any life. And so it's just, I want people to know it's not just about crime, I'm proud of the crime statistics, but it's about what they are doing in the aided cases, and when there's car accidents on Route 58, and they're redirecting traffic and saving lives, and very often, on almost every ambulance call, our police department is the first ones on scene, and they're the ones that are beginning the life-saving actions, so I just want people to know it's more than just crime. So overall, this town is safer and a better place because of our police department in itself.
I'm going to piggyback off of that and throw the ambulance and the fire department in there, too, because the number of aided cases, as the town has grown, and also as the town residents have aged over time, there's generally more medical treatment needed as we get older, and we have quite a few retirement communities in the town, which is fantastic. But these services have grown exponentially with the number of calls. I mean, you're well aware how many calls ARVAC goes out on in the course of a year, it's amazing.
It's over 6,000, they're on course for over 6,000 responses this year.
Absolutely amazing, and the incredible work they do, and the lives that have been saved, like you said, between the police department and ARVAC with the CPR saves, and we've recognized some of these saves, it's incredible, it's absolutely incredible. So those are things you really can't put a price tag on, and, you know, we had issues or perception issues of downtown being, you know, crime-ridden, and it really wasn't so, but people perceived that, and we brought in a new administration in the police department, they've reassigned people and stepped up patrols in the downtown area, not just the downtown area, but townwide, they've stepped up patrols, but the downtown area, to get rid of that perception, it's just really, it's not there anymore, and it's a good thing, because you talk to the business owners downtown, and they're not having the issues that they once had with homeless people sleeping inside their vestibules and just different appearances of unsightly characters wandering around. They've really done a great job cleaning up the downtown. The chief himself, and I've mentioned this several times, gets out on foot and walks a beat, and he'll stop into different businesses and say, hey, what's happening? You know, any issues, any problems, how's it going? And I get calls all the time on the thanks from the business owners that indicating how much better they feel downtown. We were over in the Gran Chabel Park the other day, looking at a possible site for fireworks for the 250th celebration of America, and it was just nice to see the number of people walking from the county center through Gran Chabel Park to come over and grab lunch or grab a bite to eat downtown and then walk back through. Years ago, you wouldn't see that foot traffic coming from the county center, because it wasn't, you know, people didn't feel comfortable walking through there, and that's no longer the issue.
I can personally attest to that. Working in that county center, I would have never walked through that park years ago, and it's a beautiful park, it's a safe park.
It is, it absolutely is, and with all the artwork down there now, and the art buildings and grounds, guys and girls, they keep that place pristine, and we're very happy, we're very happy. But, you know, my point is, these things come at a cost, and nobody wants to pay more taxes, every one of us up here pays taxes in this town, so it's, you know, we have to pay them also, and the last thing you want to do is raise taxes, but there is a cost associated with doing business, and unfortunately, it's everywhere today. That one bag of groceries that you paid $40 for, you know, a couple of years ago was now maybe $60, and, you know, the price of a car has gone up, everything, all the equipment, all the commodities, everything we use, the prices have gone up, and a lot of it, we can put some blame towards COVID, but we kind of hope after COVID ended that maybe things would come back down and settle down a little bit, and I think they have in some, to some degree, in some areas they have, but in the course of doing business as a municipality, they have not, and hence, we are presenting a budget which we think is very fair, and it's, there's no fat in this budget. I apologize to the people that, you know, we're all going to have to pay a little bit more, but 75 cents a day, you know, to some people, that's going to, that's going to be a big hit, because people living on social security, we understand that, we get that. But, you know, short of laying 15 people off, which I would never do unless we absolutely had to.
That would decrease services.
Right, oh, 100%, because we are not, we are not overstaffed in any department, by any means. As a matter of fact, our department heads are always asking for more, and we just have to justify what we can and what we can't do, and I think we did a good job of that with this budget, and to the town workers, I also, I just, I want to apologize, I mean, there are, there are workers that deserved a merit increase, no doubt, absolutely no doubt, but we just had to cut back somewhere, and that was one of the areas that we did, so I apologize, but please keep up your, your good work ethic, because we're very proud of all of our town employees, and keep your fingers crossed, maybe another year or two, things might be better economically and everything else, and, you know, hopefully then we can, we can do what we have to do, so.
I'd like to piggyback on what you're saying. So for the last, I would say, 10, 12, 15 years, people in Riverhead have been calling for more police, more police. This board has stepped up and heard their calls and got more, more police. And I want the residents to understand how the state's involved in this by passing bail reform and cashless bail. It used to be, and supervisor, you would know this better than anybody, but I have spoken to a number of captains, lieutenants, now when you make an arrest, it's four hours, so you're off the street for four hours. Who's paying for that? You know, the taxpayers are paying for that, the state should be paying for that, they passed the rule. But again, this board had the courage to answer the call that was a loud call for more police, and there's more police, and you see them now all over the place, not just downtown, they're all over the place. There's also been a large amount of grants that we've received, so we're not just putting more men and women on the payroll and yielding to the expense to it. I mean, the equipment that we've given, and the cameras done through grants and for vehicles and cars and equipment that we've received grant money for as well, we're doing everything we can to keep those increased costs down through the means of grant money. We've been very successful, so the police department has done a great job.
I would like to commend the chief and the captain for actually looking for grants proactively, and the chief has done a phenomenal job of monitoring overtime for PD. I think last '24, we blew the budget like big time for overtime, but the chief is really monitoring and really balancing, doing a great balancing act, making sure we're staying within the budget but doing the right thing for the town residents as well, so he's doing a great job of that.
I ditto that, I mean, he is, he really has stepped up the department in so many ways.
He's proactive.
It was very refreshing, yes, very proactive, and it was very refreshing to have a change, and we appreciate that for sure.
If I want to comment something, too, just talking about the police, it's wonderful to see, I was in Western Suffolk, and nothing against the Suffolk County Police Department, but our police presence here is phenomenal, and it's for, it's not so much for crime, what's great about it is maintaining law and order. Any public events we have, any festivals anywhere, they're out checking, checking traffic in the streets, they're just mingling around, it's giving everybody the perception of safety and well-being, and that's what you want in the town. This isn't always just stopping crime, it's also making everyone feel very comfortable and reassured that they've got our backs, and I think that's a phenomenal, a phenomenal attribute to this police department that I never felt in Western Suffolk when I lived there.
We added two school resource officers, too.
That's right.
And that's huge, I mean, sadly to say.
It's not our budget, not the school's budget.
Well, we split it, we split it with them.
They're picking up portions of it.
Right, we're paying for half, they're paying for half, but, you know, you almost can't turn the news on any night and not see some horrific act that happened, whether it's at churches or schools or places of employment, and my kids are all grown, but my grandkids are in the school district, and for a parent or a grandparent to feel more comfortable having police in the school, it's very important, it's very important. And I hope someday we can get a school resource officer in every one of our school buildings, right now they're in the high school and the middle school, but eventually, we'd like to see them down the line in all of the school buildings, so. But these things all cost money, you know, so you got to balance it, and you got to balance what you think is right, and I think we did a very good job with this budget and doing that, and be able to maintain the things that we have without adding a lot more to the budget, because we certainly did not here. Or do you have, I know you just got the whole package presented to you, but are there any specific things you want to talk about or ask myself or Jeanette about, or?
I would like to say that I was very happy to be included again this year in discussing the budget, you know, as the liaison to different departments, and I really think that the department heads were really good with their budget. They understand, you know, that time is, it's tough right now, and I think that you really did a great job with the budget. You can't go for years without increasing the budget, without piercing the cap. Eventually, that's just going to crumble, you know, the balloon's going to pop, and that happened last year, and with what you had to work with, you know, I think it, I think it's, the residents need to realize that, like you stated, supervisor, that we also pay taxes, each one of us, we don't want our taxes going up either, so, you know, thank you for the job that you did on this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank the board, I thank my entire board for your work.
I want to add one more thing to, you know, when the residents, when you see people out on the highway, when you see town workers wave to them, because we, we are, we pay a lower rate than a lot of surrounding towns, so these people are truly dedicated to what they do.
I just wanted to, you mentioned before about the officers having to spend four hours on an arrest, that a lot of that's tied into things that now the state requires, which they've passed down to the district attorney's office, that they then pass down to the police departments, and when you say four hours for an arrest, that's a simple, basic petit larceny arrest, where in the past, I mean, you'd be done in an hour, hour and 15 minutes, hour and a half tops, with a simple petit larceny arrest, but now, because of requirements that they've made, then you have to provide paperwork, the arresting officer has to provide paperwork over to the district attorney's office. District attorney's office has to look at that paperwork and approve, and make sure that the additional forms are there that they require, and the district attorney's office is shorthanded. So you, the officer can send it over, but they may not have somebody available right away, which we all understand, how everybody's working, doing more with less, so it might sit for a while. So now that officer is off the street for that whole time period, because he's got to be with his or her prisoner, and it just, it lengthened the process, and it's a shame that's what it's come to, but that's, you know, another reason we also needed to beef up the police department, where our guys, men and women, are spending more time processing a prisoner than they ever had to do before, so.
And I think it's important that people really focus on their state elections, because the state has done this, and I can say with certainty, it was Governor Mario Cuomo who caused this, and I'm not bashing, this is policy that he brought to the state, and Hocoles kept it there.
Very true. Okay, I know you guys are going to want to have time to look through this also, and continue on, and we have a second matter on for open session before we will go to executive session. Thank you, ladies, very much, great job, I appreciate all the help with this budget, you guys were fantastic. Second matter we have up is matters surrounding an amendment to Chapter 263, it's the rental code, and that will be with Councilor Howard and Senior Investigator Downs. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Okay, so the purpose of this revision before you is to strengthen the town's ability to enforce the prohibition on transient rentals. Those are our rentals that are, you know, rented under 29 days. These revisions will close loopholes that have made enforcement difficult in the past by clarifying evidentiary standards, streamlining the appeals process, and adding new presumptions that make it harder for violators to hide behind anonymous online listings. These changes, as I will go through, provide clear, practical tools to protect residential neighborhoods while ensuring due process for property owners. And when I talk about the due process problems, I mean the problems that we're experiencing prosecuting these cases in court. And with respect to that, I'd like to turn it over to Eric, you can kind of mention some of those due process issues that we're experiencing.
Thank you. Yeah, so this isn't really anything that I probably haven't discussed with all of you and also at work sessions or town board meetings before, the way that the code is currently drafted, and the way that the judges over in Justice Court treat these violations, it almost makes it impossible to prosecute unless you have a direct buy, almost like, almost like a person, like.
It's like a drug.
Have a cash transaction with testimony to, you know, say, I contacted so-and-so, so-and-so's the owner of 123 Main Street, I paid them $600, they let me stay there for one night, and, you know, that, without that, it becomes difficult when you have tenants who are coming in and renting for three, three nights or something, and they're coming in from the city, or they're coming in from New Jersey, or they're coming in from Carolina, right? You know, it's not necessarily something they want to get involved in, and even just getting an affidavit from them that's sworn isn't enough in a criminal prosecution, because the defendant has the right to cross-examine statements against them, and so that, that's what sort of gets us into this situation where the judges are not satisfied with the proof that we're coming into court with currently. So this will close, close some of those gaps and helps strengthen the town's ability to proceed on these by creating presumptions of transient rental, creating in the code presumptions relative to the online ads, and when someone gets a rental permit, having them affirmatively acknowledge that they aren't, that they, that they are aware of our prohibition against transient rentals, and hopefully, the judges will be more satisfied with that level of proof. And then previously, we could revoke rental permits, and there are provisions in the code that allow for an immediate stay, the revocation, if the person wants to appeal it to the town board. This code provision proposes to change that and shift those appeals to the zoning board of appeals, because they are, technically, there are appeals board, and so it keeps consistent sort of separation of powers type thing, type issues, where you're the ones legislating and creating the code, and then they're reviewing appeals in specific instances. And I think Rich also is proposing to include civil penalties in this to strengthen our ability to go with the civil, civil penalties in Supreme Court on these types of violations. And I think with that, Rich is going to break down in detail a little bit more about the various code amendments with everybody, if you like.
I did prepare this cover sheet for you guys, so I'll go through it one by one so that everybody can follow through with it. This basic cover sheet just covers, you know, the revision itself and why we did it, so, you know, we'll go to the first 263, 4D. It adds a cross-reference to 26320 and 26321, asserting affirming violations may be proven via direct evidence or presumption. This supports legal sufficiency of indirect evidence. Why we are making this change is, just as Eric discussed, courts were dismissing cases without tenant testimony, and that's kind of hard to get when you go into these places.
We're trying to get the tenant to testify in court. Even, oh, just jumping quickly, even if you get the tenant's information and they're from out of state, subpoenaing them to come back to Riverhead Justice Court is almost impossible, very problematic.
They don't have to, they don't have to abide by out-of-court, out-of-state subpoenas.
Correct.
So jumping into, you know, our amendment number two, 263, 5G.
So, jumping into, you know, our amendment number two, 263, 5G. This requires the applicant to sign a certification, as Eric also discussed, affirming and understanding our ban on transient rentals. So, as soon as the applicant comes in, they're aware of the situation, we have that now in the code, that they have to sign an affidavit acknowledging the fact that they understand our prohibition on transient rentals. Amendment number three, 26315B. It's automatic revocation if a violation of 263D is found. So that gives us a, that's the discretionary affidavit option for the first-time offenders. It aligns with enforcement, observed transient rental use. And why we did it is, it's a strong deterrent. A strong deterrent was needed since warnings alone, you know, weren't effective. So, it does give us the ability, if we do find a transient rental, we will be able to have that ability to reinstate the permit from our standpoint, with the owner signing an affidavit stating that they were, you know, they were caught, they're not going to do it again. We give them that one chance. It's discretionary on our part, though, depending on the situation.
Do you find them at that point?
Yes, yes. They're issued a justice court ticket, absolutely. All right. So amendment number four, it shifts the appeal authority from the town board to the zoning board of appeals. Initially, when this, when chapter 263 was amended, I think in 2006, the revocation process went through the town board. And, you know, after discussions with Eric, and, you know, we, we just felt that that wasn't, you know, the proper board to be overseeing revocation. So, I think we shifted it to the zoning board of appeals, which is really where it should be. Okay. Amendment five is our presumptive, presumptive section. This establishes multiple factors for presuming illegally, illegal transient rental use. And those factors are very important. Nightly pricing of short booking calendars, online advertising without required permit numbers. So, if you're going to advertise, you know, you've got to put your permit number on the advertisement. Motor vehicle, go ahead.
I like that.
Motor vehicle records for, or observation of reoccurring different license plates.
Can I ask you, who's, who's going to be monitoring that?
Our department, code enforcement. You know, observation of unrelated groups or occupants rotating in and out for periods of fewer than twenty-nine days. Keep in mind, this is all just presumptive evidence section. This is just something that we could use as a tool to prove that there is a transient rental situation happening. Reoccurring trash or refuse output inconsistent with a, you know, basic single-family household. Presumptions are rebuttable in these cases only by clear and convincing evidence and apply in Justice Court, Supreme Court, and zoning board of appeals. So, why we did this, it expands the range of objective criteria investigators can use, making it harder for violators to hide behind platform anonymity or short-term turnover That's the most important part of this change.
So, Rich, I have a question. So, when this is passed, which I think this is good, you went over with this with me the other day, and I really like this. Will, will an email go out to all the residents that, anybody that has a rental right now? So they're aware of this?
Well, we're going to probably tackle that from the application standpoint, so when they come in, they have to sign that affidavit. We'll include all of this on their affidavit so that they're aware of, you know, the new, the new code.
The reason why I ask that is because, you know, having been walking around, walking into neighborhoods, you know, people have concerns about it. That's why I'm wondering if there's anything we can do prior.
Maybe when you send out the renewal notices.
Yeah, sure.
Because we're doing, we're doing, the rental permits themselves are a year long at this point. So, when, when they come up for renewal, we could include a notice there.
Yeah.
And then if we get a notice of complaint on something, we can generate the notice of complaint and include a separate notice about transient renting, too.
Yeah, that's a great point.
That's good.
All right. Moving forward, amendment number six, I think we're on. Bans the advertising of rentals under twenty-nine days. This is another important tool for us. It requires, like I said, a rental permit on all ads. It triggers platform takedown obligations. It catches violations at the listing stage. So, you know, those websites that are advertising for the twenty-nine days, we can clearly see that just going to the website, you know, the Airbnbs, VRBOs, and, and the other ones out there. You know, it stops illegal activity before rentals occur at the ad stage. That was 26322, 26323. Civil enforcement and remedies. Authorize civil fines, injunctions, listing removal orders. It codifies mandatory permit revocation after confirmed transient use. Enables joint severability liability for owners, agents, and platforms. It fills the gap where criminal prosecution is impractical. Civil enforcement is faster and more flexible than criminal prosecution.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
With this one about authorizes civil fines, injunctions, listing removal orders, whose tasked with that responsibility? How does that happen? Listing the removal orders?
I think it would have to come from the town attorney's office, a letter to the website advertiser with a copy of our law. I think we did something similar with regard to the lithium ion batteries.
What would that be contempt if they don't remove the listing when we required it as a fine or penalty?
Eric or not?
It's curious.
Judge can-
It would be contempt until the judge issues an order directing them to take it down.
Like, if we, if we were to order that in our penalties and they don't abide by that, would then we go to court against the, the advertising or the listing service? That's, I'm wondering how that works. Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
That would be what would be proposed.
So, can we, can we notify, the same way we do with the batteries, right? So now you can't even ship them into the state. Can we notify the various listing services of this code and, and let them know that they're in violation if they list? Are we going to do that?
Absolutely.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay. And what's the fine for them? That should be really, I think we were twenty thousand with-
You can go into the fine section, I believe, 263-
It's got to be a hefty fine.
I believe the fines are in there.
You're in there on page nine of your presentation. I think we were like twenty thousand against Amazon if they shipped, or Walmart, or any of those online shippers coming in from another state.
Be civil fines up to five thousand per violation per day under the civil enforcement section.
We taking the fines out of the code while we're doing this so that they can just be revised by resolution each year?
The fines, the fines always have to be set in the town code.
Set them by resolution, though, like to-
Set fees by resolution, but not fines. Fines have to be defined in the town code. Because the person who potentially violated the code has to be on notice, they need to be able to see law that they could have looked up that would have told them what the penalty was.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of, in terms of the listing agents getting a much different fine.
It's five thousand a day.
So, it's five thousand every day, it's still up. That's, that's a pretty substantial fine, I think, if we do it that way. If you're happy, I mean, I just-
No, I am happy with it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think five thousand per day is, I mean, if we find that it's not working as a-
They're not going to listen to five thousand.
We find that it's not working as deterrent, then we would come back and suggest that maybe we increase it. But I think five thousand a day is pretty significant.
And this is, you know, there's a lot of single individuals that are multiple offenders that own multiple properties, multiple areas, and that have done it right in front of us. So, I appreciate you taking the time and the effort to, to, you know, figure this out and rewrite this so that we can go after these people. I mean, Creek Road is, and Wady River has been a disaster for years, and they advertise right in front of us, and you've taken great strides to, to work on them and to strengthen things, but I think this is going to help that overall. That particular area's been the one probably throwing up the most roadblocks in court, so. You have a half a dozen people in town with many, many homes, many properties that are doing this, and they're going to learn about your new code right away.
And it takes away from the legitimate, responsible hotels or stays, like, for instance, not just the hotels, but we're looking at golf cottages, we're looking at farm cottages, people that are going through the town and doing it properly as opposed to people that are just privately profiting themselves.
Yeah. And generally speaking, most of the time you see these in, you know, nice little suburban areas, and, you know, residents that are right next door, and, you know, you know, Airbnbs, albeit, or might be, you know, great in some areas, but in those residential areas, we're getting a lot of complaints about them because of the different influx of people going in and out of these places.
Transient people, I'll say it. You don't know whether or not someone is a registered sex offender, quite frankly. You live in a residential neighborhood, you're on a nice street with all families around, somebody keeps renting their home out to God knows who. It could be someone like that, and you won't know.
Yeah. So, with, I mean, we got a couple more left. We got amendment eight, which is the platform takedown enforcement. Five-day window to remove flag legal listings, noncompliant platforms, five thousand a day. Sort of modeled off of New York City, California enforcement best practices when I did some research on this. I went over the why. We'll go to amendment nine, mandatory permit revocation for transient use. Requires an automatic one-year bar on re-permitting following a confirmed violation of transient rental use, whether established by direct evidence or the presumption thereof, unless the permit holder qualifies for the affidavit option under 26315B. Why that's there is it ensures that there are real consequences for repeat violators and prevents quick re-permitting as a way to dodge enforcement. Now, let me just ask for clarification on that. So, if you have the same individual that is doing this in Wady River and then doing it in Jamesport, and they're found guilty of this violation for an offense in Wady River, does it also prevent them from renewing that permit in Jamesport and so forth? And what about people that have multiple LLCs that are really the same presidents, the same officers of those LLCs? I want to make sure that they don't shut one down and recreate a new LLC the following week, and then we start up and running. So how do we hold the individuals that are, whether they be board members of those LLCs or associations? That's a great question. I probably going to defer to Eric on that because it's sort of a legal question regarding, Eric.
Yeah.
Could you hold?
They're, they're, they're getting separate permits. It's a problem.
Because it's sort of against the property owner, I mean, the property itself.
We'd have to, we'd have to draft the code to make that clear, that it encompasses all, all properties rented.
So, if we can somehow add that to this, you're doing a great job, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to know, like, the, the particular players, you know when you violated the law. I'm using Wady River as an example, and you're doing the same thing in Jamesport and saying, oh, this is new, I didn't know. Like, you do know, you're in court for one side of the town. I want to make sure that, that all of the, because we know it's the same players repetitively.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could, we could include that in the certification they sign on application for the permit.
Okay.
That transient rental of any one of the units that they have permits for could result in revocation of permits for all.
Could it be put in the application process? So when they're filling out an application for rental permit, there should be a question that says, have you ever been found guilty of any violations from this code and list them? And they would have to put that on their application right away. Failure to do that would be a false application. So they'd have to, when they're putting in that, yes, I, I was found guilty of this, 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 all the places within the town. Similar to a job application.
I like that. That's a, that's a good way to capture a name that could be associated with three or four LLCs. And when the answer's no-
In our business, in, in the funeral industry, that's where we always, you know, we have to renew our permits, and it's any of the officers, members, funeral director, anybody that has been ever in, would have to list it at that time. And so that's the way that the state captures it. I think we've got to do it on a local level where during the application process, they would have to state, and if they're not, if they're not telling the truth, and they were found on it, the application's denied, and now there's another offense committed for, you know, for a false claim.
Yeah, okay.
What if they don't have a rental permit at all?
Well, they'd be in violation of not having a rental permit, first and foremost, and secondly, you know, we can also violate them for the transient rental if that's what we find, so, yeah, they'd be two separate distinct violations at that point.
But then what is the, the fee that they have to pay if they're found without having a rental permit?
That's under, well, it could be one or two. I think we have civil penalties, then we have regular Supreme Court, Justice Court penalties, so the fines are the same, because this section deals with all, these penalty sections deal with the entirety of 263. So, the fines for, so, the first offense is two thousand, not exceeding three thousand. Second offense is three thousand, not exceeding four thousand, and the third offense is four thousand, not, no more than six thousand for the third offense. That's our justice court penalties. But that's not changing. I just put that in, in the, in here so that, you know, you can refer to it. But that, that's not part of this revision. Only the underlying sections in the copies that you have are part of the revision, but the civil penalty section, which they also could be subject to, is the five thousand per day. Excellent work. Nice job. A lot of information together here.
The little icons you have.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I think it just makes it easier to, to follow it, to go through.
I'd just request we'd make those few little amendments, I think that may capture even more of the consistent people that are violating it throughout multiple places within the town. Yeah, I'll discuss it with Eric, and we'll come up with a good place for it, and-
I would also like, yeah, I'm sorry, I'd like to see the fines go up by a thousand dollars on all of them. You know, because I know, like, Southampton has fines that are as high as ten thousand dollars, and-
Talking about the, the justice court fines? We did, we did make the, we did make a suggestion by Councilman Rothwell, we did include in prior revision of 26323 penalties for offenses, where subsection C, it says, in the case of persons, association, associations, firms, or corporations owning or managing multiple dwelling units within the town of Riverhead, second, third, and any subsequent violations charged hereunder shall not be exclusive to a particular dwelling unit, which shall encompass all dwelling units owned or managed by such persons, associations, firms, or corporations within the town.
But it should be put on the application process if they have been found in violation. It's, you're a red flag. And then if you research and go, I'm not sure, and then you find out that, that they have been, and they didn't put it on their application, there should be a fine for that as well. I think since it's in there, we don't, we don't have any, as a policy procedure, put it into the application process as is right now.
I love that.
Thank you.
You could put it as simply as you put this whole thing with the application, and they have to sign it saying they've read it and reviewed it before they get the application, or before they submit the application.
Yeah.
Are you okay with, is everybody okay with bringing the fines up a thousand dollars? Like, if I look on page nine, on number one, it's not less than two thousand, not exceeding three thousand.
What, what is the, what is the highest the court can go, though? I think that's a question. Is there a limit in justice court that we can't exceed?
Well, it's a town code violation. Well, it's a town code violation, so we can go, we can go higher, but I would just mention that we most recently increased these fines in December of 2024.
Yeah, but we're talking about operations that are really, you know, that are making a lot of money, number one, and again, and that, you know, and when I look at some of the fines in Southampton, they're, they're up there. That's up to the board. I would like to see them go up 1,000, but-
I can certainly pull up Southampton's code and try to do a little comparison and see what they're, where they're at.
For ourselves, I mean, look at all the resources it takes you, Rich. You guys are driving back and forth, and you're on it for days and sometimes weeks and months. So, what's, how do you advertise $2,000 into that time?
I certainly don't have a problem increasing fines because if you follow the law, it doesn't affect you.
That's right.
In some cases, it's just a cost of doing business for some of these LLCs.
Exactly my point. I don't, I want it to be a cost to the business, not a cost of doing business, because it's a cost of doing business to us.
Yeah, they're gonna continually break the law.
That is not, you know, what are, you know, what are you getting out of this? Nothing, you know, I mean, you got a lot of man, I know, man hours into this, and woman hours.
Yes.
All right, we'll circle, look at that.
Thank you, guys. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, in a moment, I'm gonna ask to close the open session and go into executive session, and we will be discussing in executive session under contractual, matters surrounding contractual agreement with New York State with Thomas and Testa. We'll have matters surrounding contractual agreement with H2M and EFC with DePola and Allen. We have matters surrounding contractual agreement with Abidma with Howard and DePola. Under legal, we have matters surrounding possible sale of real property with Kern. Under personnel, we have matters surrounding terms and conditions of an employee with Howard. So, if I could have a motion to close open session and go into executive session?
So would.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, open session is closed. Have a good week, everybody, and we're gonna go into executive session. Thank you.